Good evening, this regular meeting of the Mount Horeb Area School District Board of Education will come to order. Roll call, Danny. Diana.
Here.
Jeff.
Here.
Jessica.
Here.
Kimberly.
Here.
Leah.
Here.
And I'm here as well, of course, and I saw Kate come in the door. So, welcome to everyone tonight, and Happy New Year to everyone. Dr. Solerno, can you certify that tonight's meeting has been properly noticed? Great, thank you. Let's all say the Pledge of Allegiance together. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. Alright, we're on to 1B, the mission statement. Do I have a volunteer? Hearing no volunteer, I'm happy to read the mission statement. The Mount Horeb Area School District in partnership with the community is dedicated to nurturing, educating, and challenging all students, preparing and empowering them to be productive, responsible, and self-fulfilled members of society. Moving to item 2A, approval of the presented or revised agenda. Are there any revisions?
Motion to approve.
Second, Kimberly.
Jeff is moving. Kimberly has seconded a motion to approve the presented agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed will say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and the presented agenda is approved. Item 2B, approval of the December 7th, 2020 regular meeting minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second, Kimberly.
Jeff is moving. Kimberly has seconded a motion to approve the December 7th, 2020 regular meeting minutes. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed will say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and the December 7th, 2020 regular meeting minutes are approved. Item 3A, the student spotlight. Austin Velasic, welcome to Austin. Dr. Solerno.
Well, good evening, board members. We, the administrative team, had received just the nicest email from one of Austin's teachers, Amy Arnison, if she's on the call tonight. I know she was very instrumental in recognizing Austin, but maybe first things first, let me turn it over to our high school administrative team to share a little bit about why Austin's being recognized for this auspicious award.
I tell you, thank you, everybody. It's good to see people here tonight. This is one of those weird times where you're talking about a student, and I actually even personally have not even had the opportunity to meet Austin, which, you know, is one of those do with this whole virtual thing. I tell you, but what's amazing to hear is when you get a message from a teacher about a student and just how hard, how hard they are working, and not just within the school, but what they have to do at home, and balancing those two things out, being able to help siblings, and logging in on time, and just that hard work. I think Amy, maybe you wanna, I almost feel like I should have Amy talking about this, because she was the one that brought the student forward, and she's the one that's been working with the student. But Amy, you want to share a little bit kind of what you shared with me, because I really feel coming from you is you're the one that's working with them, so.
I'm sure. I didn't know you were going to ask me this, but I would love to share some things about Austin. You know, Austin's just one of those kids who comes to class on time. He has his camera on, he participates. Always a pleasure to work with. He shows up to classes when he's supposed to, he comes to his touchpoints. He always thanks me for his help. I don't get that from everybody. So, I certainly appreciate that, all while trying to balance some brothers at home and some things that are going on because of the COVID, and he handles those very well and appropriately. And I'm super proud of Austin, and being a freshman too, and being new to the high school, he's just done a fantastic job. So, big shout out to him and his family.
Yeah, I think what an honor, and I'd be able to have Austin here, and you know, like, we haven't been able to meet in person, but I'm excited to meet him, and I think, you know, all of our students can be in the spotlight, so what they've been going through, because of what difficult time this is. But to the honor of one like Austin, Austin, thank you for all you're doing, and proud to have you represent, you know, Mount Horeb High School, and we can't look, so look forward to having you in the building whenever that may be. And, you know, Austin, if you have anything to say, we'd love to hear from you, and you know, how things are going for you, and.
I would like to thank all my teachers for helping me get my work done correctly and helping me, like, get it correctly and, like, learn how to do it, so that I know how. And it's easier for me. And I'd like to thank my parents for being there and helping me through some classwork, too. And these little buggers are pretty good at help, pretty fun helping these ones get on. But yeah, um, I think that's it. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Austin. What a pleasure, and what an honor. It's really an honor, Austin, today, with our student spotlight for the high school. Just such a joy.
Let's give a round of applause to Austin and his parents. You know, Austin, you're one of those people I don't worry about. In life, you're going places, and you've just got a heart of gold. I want to thank Mrs. Arnison also for taking the time from her busy schedule to recognize you very clearly. There's something that moved her to take the time to do just that, and I'm so very proud of you, and I appreciate you representing the very best of Mount Horeb High School. Congratulations, Austin.
Austin, I think I can say on behalf of the Board of Education, congratulations, and keep doing what you're doing. You're doing a lot right, that's for sure. And it's always great to see Mrs. Arnison as well, and we appreciate the opportunity that she's given us to recognize you. So, thanks to you both. Alright, let's move on to item 3B, school news. Kate.
Hi, everyone. So, the first thing that I wanted to share with you all tonight is that our DECA Letters from Santa event was a huge success. Over the holiday break, we sent home over 45 letters to students, and we're really happy about how that turned out. Secondly, I just wanted to say that I'm really looking forward to hearing all the discussion regarding our possible return to school this February. And personally, from a student's perspective, as much as I do love sleeping in every morning, I would love to see a return to in-person learning, so we can have some in-class instruction and social interaction. Thank you.
Awesome. Thanks a lot, Kate. That's a terrific report. Steve, do you have anything to add?
Just a few other items. I wonder if Kate might feel the same about sleeping in and going to school, knowing that final exams are on the horizon. Are you okay with that, Kate? Yeah, the trade-offs we'll take in order to be back in school. Indeed, final exams are on the horizon. In fact, the week that we come back for our second meeting as a board, we'll have final exams. That plan is scheduled to be shared here in the days ahead. I also wanted to just take a moment to foreshadow a little bit of our conversation. Families, if you haven't had the chance yet to look at your emails, early this afternoon, we sent out information about our return to school for our middle school and high school students, February 15th and February 22nd, respectively. And we plan on hosting Q&amp;A sessions for our families. Wednesday night at 5:00 p.m., we'll be visiting with interested high school families. Students are encouraged to participate as well. And there'll be a link that I will share in our board recap, and if you're on social media, you can find that link there as well. And then Thursday night at 5:00 p.m., we'll host a Q&amp;A for families, for middle school. And again, students are encouraged to attend if their schedule allows for it. And then lastly, I want to just remind folks, if you can see my screen okay, several of our students are competing in this year's Message to Teens Driving Safety Video Contest. We are competing, Mount Horeb is competing against, I believe, five other schools within Dane County. As they do in Chicago, vote early and often. Mount Horeb High School students Leah, Austin, Anna, and Emma put together a really fantastic PSA. If you get a chance to watch it, it definitely sends home the message about not texting and driving and just using good judgment behind the wheel. So, please do consider voting for your fellow classmates. Our students have really done a wonderful, wonderful job. Thanks again to our tech ed team for helping to sponsor this neat opportunity. If you need access to this link, go to channel47, fox47.com, or check out our district's Facebook page for more details.
Great, thank you, Dr. Solerno. Moving on to item 3C, citizen comments. The number to text your name to for inclusion in citizen comments is 608-250-9166. We have at least nine speakers already tonight, and so I'd ask people, I'd remind people of the three-minute, more or less, limit that we have on speakers for citizen comments, just to move things along, and we'd be happy to, we'd be happy to have you participate. Again, it's 608-250-9166.
Wonderful, and we welcome Rhiannon. This evening, Rhiannon Heim, are you, Rhiannon Heim, are you on the call tonight?
Yes, I am.
Good evening and welcome.
Good evening. My name is Rhiannon Heim, and I'm a sophomore on the gymnastics team. I want to start off by saying thank you to the board for letting me speak tonight. Gymnastics to me is more than just a sport. It's a way to escape the stress that comes with being a high school student and a way to interact with my teammates. Getting to go to practice has become the highlight of my day. During season, though, the highlights are always the competitions. Not being able to compete would take a toll on every gymnast on our team, both physically and mentally. Every single person on our team has been working extremely hard in the gym since the early parts of June, and the way we showcase all of the hard work we have put in is through meets. Not having any meets would, will put a huge damper on the overall morale of the team. We have all worked hard to get where we are today, and for that, hard work to possibly be for nothing in the end is disheartening. Gymnastics is also a mental sport, just as much as a physical sport. It takes so much mental strength to even try some of the skills we do. But I can say that competitions will help bring some of that confidence that is needed for gymnastics. Without that confidence, it is easy to lose the will to keep trying the things that scare you. I personally have struggled with many mental blocks on some skills this summer in practice, and the only thing that has been driving me to work hard and get those skills is the fact that I want to compete those skills in a meet. If we don't have meets, some of that motivation isn't going to be there anymore, and I will be taking a step backwards in gymnastics. I don't want that to happen to me or any of my teammates. I would also like to take the time to emphasize the fact that gymnastics is a low-risk sport. Public Health Madison Dane County has given the go-ahead for low-risk sports to not only practice but compete. My teammates and I know what it looks like to run a safe practice that includes social distancing and mask-wearing. We can apply those same safety precautions to a competition environment without any problems. We have als, we also have an amazing coaching staff that will make sure we are following all the rules and guidelines highlighted by Public Health Madison Dane County. The Mount Horeb Gymnastics Team has always lived by the meaning of one word, and that word is believe. Martha has taught us not only to believe in ourselves, but in each other, too. And I believe with all the love, kindness, and support this team has for each other this year, we are going to do great things. All we need is the opportunity to compete. On behalf of my team, I ask that you give us the go-ahead to let us compete, so we can showcase all the hard work and time we have put in. Thank you for giving me the time to speak tonight, and I hope you take into consideration what me and my fellow members of the Mount Horeb Gymnastics family have had to say.
Great, thanks very much.
Next up is Grace O'Neil.
Hi, I am Grace O'Neil, and I am a senior on the Mount Horeb Gymnastics Team. I'm speaking tonight in hopes of having the opportunity to have competitions. Ever since we have been provided the chance to practice, we have continued to follow the public health guidelines. Along with our high school practice, in order to get more practice time, several of my teammates and I have been going to Mattohunt Twisters. I know in recent weeks, other schools in Dane County area have been given permission to compete, while also maintaining similar health precautions that are followed during practice. This includes wearing masks, maintaining proper social distancing, and sanitizing the mats. Many, if not all of these schools that have the opportunity to begin competing are much larger than us. Gymnastics is a team and individual sport. With one girl competing on an event at a time, gymnastics is low-risk, which Public Health Madison Dane County has already allowed low-risk sports to start competing. When considering travel, there are several options. One way is to drive separately to the competitions, and another way is to social distance on the bus. As a team of 12 gymnasts and five coaches, maintaining adequate distance is doable, because our buses have the ability to hold 88 people. Throughout our offseason, my team and I worked hard to get where we are today. When we got your approval to practice, even with no competition scheduled, I could see the dedication and optimism throughout the team. As a senior, nothing is more important to me than being able to compete with my team for my last year as a Mount Horeb gymnast. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Grace. We appreciate your comments.
Sean Johnson, good evening, Sean.
Good evening, Dr. Solerno. Thank you for taking the time to listen to our comments and concerns. It's very much appreciated. I am the father of a son currently a junior at Mount Horeb High School who participate in basketball and other extracurricular activities. I'd like to respectfully ask that you allow our coaches to create a game schedule outside of Dane County for our winter sports. I believe the coaches are ready and prepared to make this happen and give our student athletes the opportunity to compete in a safe environment and represent our school and our community. Every day, I will open up the newspaper, and I see all the high schools playing high school basketball across the state. Since December 15th, there have been 770 high school boys' basketball games that have been played across the state of Wisconsin. On the girl's side, there have been 679 high school games played across the state. That's a total of 1,449 high school basketball games since December 15th. Just the last week, 9.4 miles away from our high school, Barnville also participated in their first games of the season. I guess my point is this can be done safely and under supervision of our high school coaches and trainers. Today, our kids are jumping in the cars and driving two hours to Wisconsin Bells on a weekly basis, just to compete with no coaching and no trainers to help support them. They're driving to any available gym or church, just to work on their skills in the hopes that one day they'll have a chance to play and put that red and white jersey on. Our seniors want to do it one last time. This is what they've been working for since third grade, for a chance to play and represent this wonderful community. Having our players in a more controlled and safe environment is a better situation for everyone involved. These kids have not been able to compete in their favorite sport or activity in 304 days. They've been watching their friends do it in nearby school districts and do it safely for a long time. To sum it up, these student athletes deserve a chance to compete and play in the sports that they've worked so hard for. They deserve the chance to represent their community, their school, and please don't take that away from them. I please, I believe that they have gone through enough over the past 10 months, and I think we all have. So, thanks for your time, and please do it tonight to allow our student athletes to compete outside Dane County, as time's running out. Communities like Wanakee, DeForest, Madison Edgewood have all approved or already play in basketball outside of Dane County. This is our only chance, and I believe that we can do it safely. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sean.
Sean, we do thank you for your leadership in the community with our youth programs, a really remarkable leadership. And speaking of leadership, we have Todd Nessaim coming up next. Todd.
Good evening, Dr. Solerno, and everyone else. Again, thank you for taking the time, as everyone else has said. It's very, it is very much appreciated, so. I won't speak too long here tonight. I did write a letter you all received from me before break, so. My points and things were kind of summarized in that letter, but I do feel like I need to say a few things tonight before some discussion. Currently, almost all Badger Conference schools and school boards have made the decision to allow their teams to participate in games outside of Dane County. The importance of this decision is huge for our programs to stay on pace with those schools with whom we compete against year in and year out. Obviously, if none of those Dane County schools were making the decision to allow for traveling, we probably wouldn't be talking tonight either. However, the fact of the matter is, all those schools have made the decision to allow for games outside of Dane County, and now we are hoping that our school board gives us the same opportunity. Number two, as with the decision to return to practice, families will have the ability to opt out. They don't feel comfortable with allowing their son to participate, and no repercussions, certainly, for those decisions. We continue to include those players on our team communications, our summer plans, and our future events. We respect the decisions of all families to do what is best for them. And thirdly, time is of the essence, as was mentioned one or two times here. We need to meet the WIA requirements, first of all, for practice, and then we have to certainly go ahead and try to find opportunities, not only to teams to play against, but if we're playing outside the county, then possibly venues to play in as well. Regionals for us begin February 16th. By that time, we are able to legally compete. We only have a month to do so if voted on tonight. So, our athletes, especially our seniors, I think deserve a chance to do this. But following the guidelines set forth by Dr. Solerno and the safe protocols set by our athletic department, I know we can make this opportunity happen for our athletes. Again, thank you for listening and hopefully making this a possibility.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, Todd. We appreciate it. Emily Wallace.
Hi. Hello.
Hi, Emily.
Hi. Hi, my name is Emily Wallace, and I'm a junior on the girls' basketball team. Tonight, with respect, I am asking for the vote yes to let winter sports coaches create a schedule. On behalf of the girls' basketball team and all other winter sports, we are all patiently waiting to compete again. It's been tough enough in these difficult and different times, but it's making it that much harder watching and knowing that other schools around Wisconsin, and now even a few in Dane County, are able to play and compete, but we are not. Sports give me motivation, leadership skills, positivity, and a mental drive that not only allows me to do well in school, but also be a better person in general. Being able to practice is one step closer to normalcy, but there's no comparison to a real live game. I believe that all athletes and coaches will be willing to follow all health guidelines to keep everyone safe, and will do whatever it takes to be able to compete. We athletes have all been waiting and are requesting your vote yes tonight, so we can finish out our 2021 winter season with a few games or competitions. Thank you for your time and allowing me to speak tonight.
Great job, Emily. Thank you very much.
Good evening to Martha Kohler Faust.
Hello, good evening, everyone, and thank you, Dr. Solerno and school board, for allowing us to speak. Back in November, I started my 24th year of coaching the Mount Horeb High School gymnastics team, knowing that my coaching staff and I had hurdles to overcome. We have been working hard in so many ways, following the safety protocols, developing skills and routines, and also instilling positive and hopeful thoughts within our team. Our hope now is that you will allow us to compete with other schools outside of Dane County. This team is family to me. Sorry. And we, coaches, will continue to ensure that our girls are safe. I pride myself in teaching not only gymnastics, but also life skills, including the benefits of staying optimistic and believing in oneself. Our team model this year is stronger together, and I believe with your approval of allowing competitions for us, we will be stronger together. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Coach. We appreciate your comments very, very much, and your leadership as well. Thank you.
And coming up next is Julia Magnuson. Good evening, Julia.
Hi, thank you for giving me the time tonight. Hi, my name is Julia Magnuson, and I'm a senior in the girls' basketball program at Mount Horeb High School. I'm here on behalf of my teammates and coaches to ask the school board one more time to please give us a chance to play. We, as a community and program, have many ups and downs regarding our sports seasons this year, and we only ask that tonight you give us the only little bit of hope we have left of returning to the floor. We seniors need you to remember what it's like to have your last year, to remember what it's like to work hard and earn your senior year and play one last time as a Viking. It is nothing short of frustrating to see all other teams within and outside of Dane County gaining back their seasons one by one, while we have to sit here and watch. With the little coach-to-player contact we have had, we have been COVID-responsible during every practice, and we, as a program, are still willing to abide by those rules. But we need the opportunity to compete. We need our sports. The seniors deserve one more time to play, the teams deserve to be a team, and we need you to hear us. Please give us the little hope and opportunity we have left to play. Seniors only get one more year, and winter sports as a whole have fought hard and been patient, and we deserve to play. Thank you for giving me the time tonight.
Thank you, Julia. Awesome job.
We have Torrin Hannah on the call. Torrin?
Hello. I'm Torrin Hannah. I'm a senior basketball player for Mount Horeb. I am addressing the school board tonight to advocate for our coaches to be able to schedule winter sports competitions. Being able to compete my senior year is very important to me and my teammates. This year has been filled with many difficult decisions for school boards and school administrators. This decision is about giving people a choice, the same choice that has been given to student athletes all over the state and even here in Dane County. Playing with the support of the school board community and our coaches under the guidelines established by the WIA is the safest playing option for us. Please give us seniors and the team the choice to represent Mount Horeb and compete with our peers. Thank you.
Thanks, Torrin. That's great.
Good evening to Jennifer Peterson.
Thank you. My name is Dr. Jenny Peterson, and I, my daughter Ella is a junior on the Mount Horeb Gymnastics Team. And I'd like to speak on behalf of the Mount Horeb gymnasts and parents. You may recall Ella spoke previously in the fall about, at one of the board meetings, concerning her desire to return to the sport that she loves after recovering from surgery for two broken feet last season. Having experienced the mental anguish of watching my child sit out a full year of sports activity, I am a firm believer that this would be quite detrimental to the well-being of all of the Mount Horeb student athletes that are facing this looming possibility. Our kids really need to be back playing sports for the psychological and physical benefits that can help support their developmental growth. To give you a bit of my personal background, I'm a physician, I work as a dermatologist, and currently run my own private dermatology practice in Dodgeville, Platteville, and Lancaster, which are located in Iowa and Grant Counties. I have successfully kept my clinic running and myself and my staff healthy without any COVID-19 infections contracted at my offices through very strict and diligent masking, distancing, and cleaning precautions over the past nine months. I truly understand the risks of this disease, but feel that with proper precautions in a low-risk environment, such as individual gymnastics, competitions can be held safely. My daughter and all of her teammates have been practicing two to five days per week in Madison since June without any infections. They are well-versed in masking, social distancing, and cleaning equipment while continuing to practice safely. They have successfully carried out these same safety protocols in their practices at the high school. Their experience so far is supported by the study out of the University of Wisconsin Orthopedics Department in Madison that demonstrated participation in sports is not associated with an increased risk of COVID-19 infection among Wisconsin high school student athletes. According to the current recommendations from Public Health Madison Dane County, low-risk sports such as individual gymnastics are currently permitted to compete inside and outside of Dane County, with observation of the mass gathering number restrictions if we are competing within Dane County. Given that these girls are returning state gymnastics champions, they're obviously anxious to get in some competitions prior to the state meet that is currently scheduled for February 26th and 27th. Most gymnastics teams across the state of Wisconsin are already competing, and we are recently have been made aware that Wanakee DeForest, Manona Grove, and Verona's gymnastics teams, which are all located in Dane County, are set to compete outside of Dane County in January. We realize that group transportation to these competitions may be a challenge, but we've met as a parent group, and we'd be very happy to work through the logistics of this process and possibly transport our kids individually to the competitions. and to, uh, possibly transport our, our kids individually to the competitions. Um, I would ask, uh, that given gymnastics is eligible to compete under the current Public Health Madison Dane County rules, that I would ask the board give authorization for our coaches and athletic director to start arranging competitions outside of Dane County immediately. I do not believe that this would require any alterations to the gradual reopening plan. Um, on behalf of my family, all of the Mount Hore winter sport athletes and specifically the girls gymnastics team, I would implore you to make a motion to allow all winter sports to proceed with participating in competitions outside of Dane County as well as in Dane County as is allowed going forward for the mass gathering restrictions. And I'd like to thank the Mount Hore Board of Education for your time and consideration of my thoughts. I do truly understand how hard it is to have to be making these decisions of us. I've had to do this for my own practice and there are no set guidelines and we're doing this, um, uh, out of, of the best information that we have. So I really thank you for, for your efforts.
Thanks very much, Dr. Peterson.
Jessica Schwer.
Good evening. Uh, thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. Um, I am a teacher in the district, but I'm here today to give you, um, a brief parent perspective um, for many parents in our community, uh, with regard to the return to school for grades six through twelve. Um, as you, I'm sure you are well aware, um, we are gonna, I hear we are continuing to offer the virtual platform for those families who choose it, and I want to thank the district and the board for doing that. I know it's not easy. I've said on the planning side of it at the K-two level and it's brutal to try to plan for those, those two venues. The fact of the matter is that for some families, um, in our community, it's not safe for their children to return to school yet. Um, so thank you for allowing those families that option. I encourage all school staff to continue to be considerate and thoughtful in their messaging to, to families and especially to students as we approach the return to school for those K, uh, six, twelve students that can return. Some students can't come back yet and that might be what they want to do, but their family has to make the very hard choice to say no. Um, and so I just thank you for being considerate and sensitive to those students, um, knowing that they will likely be in the minority, um, but that not all students can come back yet. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Jessica. Those were very, very thoughtful comments. Thank you.
Lastly, Cory Olson.
Um, hi, my name is Cory Olson. Yeah, like you just said, thank you so much for, um, letting me speak tonight. I really appreciate it. Um, I am a junior at Mount Hore High School and I'm also a member of the boys', uh, basketball team. I am asking respectfully for, uh, the board to vote yes to allow winter sports to participate in competing games outside of Dane County. Uh, something I really want to highlight tonight that means a lot to me and is personal is the mental health of our student athletes and the toll that it has taken throughout the pandemic. Um, as I highlighted in my note to the superintendent, Board of Education and Athletic Director, mental health has been something that I have struggled with in and out of the COVID-19 pandemic. I know many of my other classmates and athletes have struggled with the same issues and the ability to practice has definitely helped. However, I don't feel like this is enough as kids are still looking for that competitive outlet, which is substantial in helping the kids who struggle with these issues to feel a sense of togetherness and overall happiness. I don't want to see others struggling again and a way to prevent that is to be able to play sports. Please don't let the mental health of my fellow student athletes go down the drain. Thank you for your time tonight and I hope you vote yes to allow winter sports to compete outside of Dane County. Thank you.
Great. Thank, thanks Cory. Thanks a lot. Dr. Salerno?
I don't believe we have anyone else yet.
All right. Do we have any additional citizen comments? Six oh eight two five zero nine one six six. Any additional citizen comments? Last chance. All right. Well, close citizen comments. I wanted to make, um, a, a, a comment. We usually don't do it, but I was, I, I think the the leadership that has been shown by, uh, the student athletes tonight is really something to, to take, take heart in and, and, and to congratulate them on. So thanks for, again, for being here tonight and for showing us what leadership is and, and for doing such a great job. So thank, thanks again. Uh, great. We'll move on to item four A, personnel transactions.
Board members, just a couple of, uh, announcements if you don't mind. First, you'll see an addendum on tonight's transactions. And please allow me a moment just to say a few words about two names that are up for consideration regarding retirement. I'm speaking of Becky Kleppi and Jack Prehn. Uh, first Becky Kleppi, uh, who's been with the district since nineteen ninety-nine. Uh, I always get a kick out of just kind of thumbing through personnel files and seeing what past leaders and colleagues have said about each of these, uh, two fine folks. Uh, in Becky's file, a couple of common themes appeared to, uh, uh, stand at the forefront about her work, that her materials were always well-prepared in advance. Uh, and that she had a knack for really maximizing instructional time. Students rarely have behavioral issues in her classroom, uh, and that's because she runs a pretty tight ship. Um, devotion, uh, in terms of the number of extra hours during the week and even on weekends to prepare for effective lessons. She's one of those vehicles I often see parked on the, on the street, uh, late into the evenings and, and on the weekends. Uh, she's not a stranger to hard work. She did obtain her Masters of Arts from De- for Turbo University back in two thousand sixteen. She's lauded by others as being a very kind teacher who's smile and encouraging words boost the self-esteem of the children in her classroom. So we congratulate Becky on this auspicious occasion, quite an announcement after several years serving the students and community of Mount Hore. And I also regretfully, uh, but happily for his sake and that of his family, uh, wish to recognize Jack Prehn, Jack, uh, being one of our star teachers, quite frankly, in terms of not only what he does in the classroom, but then also in terms of coaching. He focuses really on empowering students and encourages them to reflect on their own progress and skills. Uh, he's noted also for being very respectful and caring, uh, in his relationships with students, which in turn, uh, really he gets great results from kids. He's very genuine. Uh, those of you who've had the chance to communicate with him know him to be an upbeat, a really fun demeanor, somebody you enjoy just being around. His passion and excitement for learning continue to motivate students and help them develop positive life habits around health. And, um, again, not just in the classroom or on the court as a coach, but also serving in several leadership roles, uh, on building in district wellness committees. He truly is a master teacher and we congratulate Jack and his beautiful family on this great news. Uh, please join me in, in, uh, thanking, uh, these fantastic professionals.
Thank you, Steve.
Motion to approve, uh, personnel transactions, but I'm sad to do it.
Yes, second. Jeff, were you the second?
Yep.
Right, Leah has moved. Jeff has seconded a motion to approve personnel transactions. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
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 Those opposed will say no. Uh, the motion carries, uh, the ayes have it, the motion carries and, uh, the cons- personnel transactions are, are, uh, are, I'm sorry, did I, did I? Are com- are approved. Did I miss something? I heard someone's, heard someone's voice. Nope, just got some s- squelch on the squawking on the line. Okay. Fair enough. Onto, uh, item five, A and B, the consent agenda. Would anyone like either of those told?
Motion to approve, Kimberly.
All right, Kimberly, we're gonna give you the second. Jeff, be you to it. Uh, Jeff has made a motion, uh, Kimber- which Kimberly has seconded, um, to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all, all those in favor will say aye.
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 Those opposed will say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries and the consent agenda is approved. Item six, A, Information Advocacy Report, Opportunities for Progress-Based Grouping and Advanced Learning. Mrs. Straka and Mrs. Parmley.
Thanks, Mr. Heiss. Appreciate the time, um, that Ms. Parmley and I can share this month's information advocacy report. So Ms. Parmley is gonna go first. If you, uh, don't know Ms. Parmley, she is our district advanced learning coordinator. Um, for people who don't know what that is, um, maybe you, you've heard the term tag, talented and gifted, but that term, um, has seen its time and uh, school districts are moving towards the advanced learning coord- coordinator and program pathway instead. So um, Ms. Parmley has been leading this program for many, many years since she's been in our school district. And she's gonna share with you some of the opportunities that our students have that they can, um, work on activities at grade low and above grade level. So Christine, I will hand it over to you and I'll take it back over for my portion.
All right, thank you. Um, all right. So I just wanted to highlight a few things, um, that maybe are a little bit different this year with our, um, virtual setting. Um, it has really changed, obviously, the way we do school in general. Um, but a few things that have been really great, um, for our advanced learning program is that not being limited by the physical, um, space, maybe like the classroom, how many kids we can fit in a room or in a space. Um, and also our schedules that aren't as limiting, um, for the work that I'm doing this year. Um, when we have the K-five schools on one schedule and six, twelve on a different schedule, it kind of allows, um, me to have more access to students at the same time, um, especially when like all third graders have the same exact schedule. So they all have the free, um, same free time, um, things like that. So it has been a really nice way to be able to reach more students. Um, and the virtual Wednesdays have allowed for a lot of programs and opportunities for kids, um, that maybe wouldn't necessarily have participated in the regular school year, but now have those Wednesdays that are free and available to them to participate in different programs. Um, one thing I did wanna also highlight from our work group this summer is one of the ideas that we discussed as a committee was, um, the communication piece and just working on being able to communicate out with our advanced learning families more. And so, um, as the school year started, we started, um, I started a monthly newsletter that I've been sending out with updates and information for our families, which I think has been, um, well-received by parents and a good opportunity for them to reach out and ask questions if they have them. It's also posted on our advanced learning website and accessible to anyone that way. Another really positive thing that we started this year was our student leader program, something else that we discussed as our work group this summer. Um, allowing our six, twelve students to, um, really shine in their leadership skills and develop talent, um, and actually work with that talent for leadership by making connections with some of the younger students. And so we currently have a writing group that is led by one of our high school students. It's a journalism group and, um, she is working with, um, fifth through seventh grade students weekly to work, to learn about writing articles and they hope to, um, write an article for the Mount Hore Mail soon. We also have students that are working throughout the week tutoring other students. So we have middle and high school students that meet with um, elementary age students to help with work completion or homework help and things like that as needed. And we have students that are meeting with kids to play Math twenty-four and work on their math skills. So it's been a great way to give those middle and high school students an opportunity to really develop those leadership skills to have our younger students working with our older students and build a lot of connections that way. Um, and then one other positive thing that we have going on this year, um, we have participated in the Wisconsin Center for Academically Talented Youth Programs, um, which is now called the Center for Advanced Academics, which is on the screen right now. And those are online reading courses that students participate in that are, um, quite a bit more challenging than, uh, regular grade level curriculum. And this year we are a part of a grant that is allowing, um, ten additional students to participate from our district at no cost, um, to help develop those leadership skills as well. So that, that, those are just some highlights from this year that, um, are a little bit different than the traditional programming that we've done. Um, but as always, we still have our math groups and our enrichment groups and, um, things that are continuing to happen, K-twelve, um, in all of our buildings. And just another shout out to our F P S International World Champs who you can kind of see on that screen. I always wanna give a shout out to them, um, for, for, um, taking first in the entire world last, um, last summer at their international conference. So way to go, um, to all of those students and just, just, I'm really proud of all of our kids for stepping up and taking on extra challenges, challenges this year when I know school is not as easy, um, maybe from a distance. And so, um, just so proud of all the kids who have stepped up to try something new or continue, um, working in really challenging programs. So that's what I have to share. If you have any questions.
Great. Thank you, Christine. Questions or comments from the board?
Christine, you should know that I've heard from more than one person how much they appreciate that newsletter you've been putting together. It's been very well-received and I know that takes time. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight.
Of course. Thanks for all that you do for, for, for all of our kids. We appreciate it very, very much.
We have a second half of the report, uh, but first I want to say thank you as well, Christine. Within our virtual learning and, and pandemic environment, Christine has found creative ways to not only continually programming for, uh, the current students who have been identified as van- advanced learners, but also as she shared, just expanding it and these opportunities, um, that students may not have had, she's found ways to make it work. So um, it's been really, really neat to see that happening for our kiddos because of the extra work and creative work she's put into it. So thank you very much, Christine. Speaking of work and being creative, our staff have also had to, um, be creative with how they're offering instruction. And they've had to be creative with their learning as well. So the second half of the advocacy report tonight focuses on the, um, how we look, work to retain our staff and how we work to help our staff grow through various professional development opportunities. So this year, sort of looked a little different in that we really had to be creative with some just-in-time learning as well as some strategic staggered learning. So on the screen that is shared right now, um, looking at that summer work and how do we offer staff members um, learning ahead of time, uh, uh, ahead of our traditional in-service opening week. We know that we had staff with varying needs, whether they wanted to get their learning during that in-service week or whether they really wanted to get that learning earlier on in the summer. So we tried to offer various opportunities for staff members to, to get what they needed, whether it was more logistical mechanic things like how to use certain Google products, how to use certain applications or more, um, instructional approaches. So, uh, wanted to make sure that staff were supported, not only in their learning, but then how they can help improve student learning. And then the next slide, uh, looks at, um, if, if you may, may remember throughout the past couple of years, we've been sharing with the board, uh, the work that we've been doing to support staff with virtual learning and how do you, and how to integrate, um, how, how to integrate student devices in the classroom, applications in the classroom. Well, that work got sped up a little bit this year, uh, but we are continuing to support staff members in a cohort rollout model through that digital implementation. Um, and then trying to provide specific technology tools when staff would like them. So for example, we have a product called NearPod that we have trainings, uh, with our sixth grade and, and seventh grade on, cause that's a product we're using. So we wanted to dive deeper into that. So more of that just-in-time learning that I mentioned earlier. And then the last piece is some of our traditional professional developments and just keeping the board in the loop as to some of the initiatives going on, whether it's the co-putting and co-teaching and how staff members at specific content areas or grade levels are supported, um, through quarterly or monthly coaching, as well as, uh, we just had at the education committee, uh, a number corner presentation and how we're supporting staff professional development. Whether it was initial rollout back in June, um, to coaching throughout this year. And then we'll also look at this June, getting a refresher for staff to implement bridges, um, at the grades one through five level. So various things going on and then we're also continuing our vision with the Professional Learning Institute, the P L C, uh, the PLC, the PLC Institute, and that's going to be back in Madison this summer. It was both in Madison this past fall, but it was canceled due to obvious reasons, I think. But they're coming back in the summer, so hopefully if it all goes well and teachers feel comfortable, we can get a group of teachers to attend that training in Madison. That's in our own backyard, which is exciting. That's all I have, Rod.
Great, thank you, Mrs. Straka. We appreciate your leadership. Does the board have any questions or comments for Sarah? All right. Thanks, Sarah and Christine. We appreciate your report tonight. Item 6B, COVID-19 update, Dr. Solerno.
Good evening again, board members. And if you don't mind me just mentioning my appreciation to Sarah and our administrators for working to implement many of the professional development initiatives that have occurred here in our district. You can see many of them are tied to the board's strategic plan. I've always believed the greatest gift we can give our employees is an investment in them, and that's what I see professional development is. And I think some of our very best PD has been a result of other staff members teaching their fellow staff members. I think that's even more powerful. So a tip of the hat to, to Sarah, but I also know that extends well beyond Sarah and her good work, too. Speaking of, of good work, we appreciate the work of our families here over the holiday break as we've worked to initiate planning for our intermediate center students' return on February the first. Running concurrently to that was this opportunity for our K two families to onboard or offboard into the hybrid or into the all-virtual model. And so what I'd like to do tonight is share a little bit of information about that and then talk a little bit about next steps in terms of planning for our students at the middle school and, and the, and the high school and then open it up to questions you may have. First things first, let us do talk about the results of our families' responses to the kindergarten and second grade opportunity on and off ramp. We have found far more families are now interested in returning back into the hybrid model, such that I believe that we are actually at about 75% of the entire K two student body on average approximately wanting to return back into the hybrid model. And that will necessitate us asking some of our teachers who are on the virtual capacity to come and join us in a hybrid model. Jessica Schwerer's comments earlier tonight were so well made, we have to be considering the needs of all kids and that we know that the virtual model has been successful for, for many. So we are in the process right now of reaching out to families who didn't get a chance to submit their survey in this process. Almost all second grade families have been contacted, as have been our multi-age group families. And so we're feeling pretty good about being able to wrap that process up by week's end and hopefully still be on target to share with our staff what their assignments will be going into, going into this February first launch. Now similarly, we had a very strong turnout from our families at the intermediate center. And as you might imagine, those numbers mirrored in terms of percentages, what we saw at the K two level, approximately 75% of our students in grades three through five are seeking to be in a hybrid instructional model on February first. And we are now also in the process of reaching out to, to families who didn't get a chance to complete that survey so that we can have an even sharper picture of, of where we're at. One of the pieces that I think would be helpful just to remind families is that there are some things that are outside the district's control in terms of scheduling. And now really is the time to start setting the table with your student that there could be, and I underscore the word could be, a disruption in terms of their current class assignment. One of those pieces that's beyond our control has to do with our employees and their desire or need to, I shouldn't say desire, because in many cases that's just not true, their need to seek leave because of their own serious health condition or that of a loved one who lives within their home. And so therefore, by that, that's that very standard, we may need to make some adjustments in students' peer groups and assignments. But then another factor in that is what you chose, because what you chose may not necessarily be parents, what your staff is assigned to, and that obviously then would necessitate some kind of change. Our goal, of course, is to mitigate any disruption and know that we make these decisions very, very thoughtfully, deliberatively. And what you can do now, I think, is to prepare your child for that potential. In our communications to families, we have provided some resources to you so that way you can just have some conversations about change, especially when it's outside our own control. That's a life skill. I think that all of us, even me as an adult, sometimes it's, it's one that we have to work towards. And this concept of resiliency, you'll find some great resources from a child-based perspective and how maybe to institute kinds of questions in an age-appropriate way with your kids about change. Our focus now has turned towards middle and high school students. Today, families, you should have received a survey in your email. If you did not get that information, we've posted all of those links on our district's social media sites, Twitter, Facebook, and Instagram. That survey, we're asking for a pretty fast turnaround time by Friday at 3:00 PM. This will allow us to maximize the amount of time it will take in order to rebuild master schedules. Here again, it's really important to manage expectations at all grade level, K through 12, in terms of what we might expect to see when our children return on February 15th and 22nd at the middle and high school respectively. There will be some hiccups. And as you might imagine, in a larger organization, especially when you have multiple offerings, those hiccups might be more pronounced. And so we're continuing to, to rely on your grace that you've afforded us since March 13th of 2020 as we find our way through this. And please know that we would welcome your suggestions and your feedback in some Q and A, some listening sessions that I referenced at the onset of tonight's meeting. That will take place for the high school on Wednesday night at 5:00 PM. And Thursday night at 5:00 PM, I'll put both those links in the board recap that we send out to you tomorrow. With that being said, I'm happy to avail myself any questions the board may have.
Great, questions for Steve? Questions for Steve, comments for Steve? All right, well, Steve, thanks for your forbearance in, in, as you move towards six twelve.
Hey, Rod, I'd like to say something. That is just thank you, because I know a lot of efforts going into all this. Thanks to you and everybody else who's putting in the time.
That's very kind of you. It really is a team effort. Everybody's just doing their part. I think all of us have the same vision to do good and right by kids. Thank you for recognizing, that means a lot.
Great, other, other questions or comments? All right, hearing none, we'll move to action items. Item 7A, consideration of a revision to the district's gradual reopening plan to reflect COOP and extracurricular regional competitions. I have a motion to offer.
I have a lot of questions. Would you prefer me to wait until there's a motion or do you want to have discussion first?
Ask, ask your questions, ask your questions.
Um, okay, there's a lot of them. I emailed Steve some of these, so I already know the answer to, to some of the questions that I have, but a few that came up. So I read through the letter that you sent us. And are we proposing all bus levels of sports or just what public health is recommending? I was a little confused by that part.
We, I, I'm going to, I'm going to propose that we, that we amend the gradual reopening plan such that we will follow all recommendations of public health, Madison and Dane County in all capacities with the exception of out-of-county travel for COOP and extracurricular competition.
So what does that mean? I don't, I don't know what that means, that's what I'm asking. Does that mean all sports and extracurriculars or just?
No, it means all. It means all.
Okay. My other question, we talked about in the letter, it says will not exceed 75 miles. Do we have enough bus drivers to be able to make this work?
Thanks for asking that question. We are working with our transportation coordinator. One of the things that we were heartened by was the degree to which families are willing to help partner with us, to be known ourselves in their game. I so appreciate some of our gymnastics parents even saying, hey, we'll even carpool if you choose to. Our goal would be not to do that, but you know, never say never. We will certainly cross that bridge when we come to it, but we, we think we can get to a yes with many of these.
Do you have other questions, Leah?
No, I'm just struggling with, you know, we've talked about we need to follow the science, we need to follow public health, but now we're saying we should not follow public health and go outside. And I understand all the reasons behind it, everything in the letter makes sense. I'm just having a hard time reconciling the fact that we're, we're just going around public health. That sounds really frustrating.
I will, I will make a motion and I move to rescind the board's October 19th, 2020 gradual reopening plan alteration and replace it with the following. The district shall follow all recommendations of the public health, Madison and Dane County in all capacities with the exception of out-of-county travel for COOP and extracurricular competitions.
Second.
I have moved and Dani has seconded a motion as, as stated and as displayed on the screen. Is there any further discussion?
I just have a follow-up question from one of the things that Leah asked about transportation. And I'm wondering, is transportation extended also to the co-op sports?
As you know, many of the administrators have been driving in our personal vehicles. A lot of our co-op families particularly swim to ensure that they are safely arriving to and from their swim events. We have also offered a reimbursement stipend to carpool families, those traveling to SOC for hockey. We did that beginning last year.
Okay, I have a couple more questions. So does your amendment mean we're going to follow what's in the letter? Because I see your, your document was updated since what was in there this morning.
I made the, I made the motion that you see on the screen.
So, okay. So then would the admin come up with the standard operating procedures and then like our admin rights to go along with this? And that's basically what the letter is? Or?
Certainly there are, there are issues that can be worked out administratively. There are obviously particularly protocols that, that, that we need to have in place to protect our, our, our student athletes and, and, and those can be done administratively. I'm sure there are other issues as well.
Right, because I got some questions on the letter, but if that's admin regs, then they're not part of the motion and I don't need to ask them now necessarily, so.
No, I, I think you're right. I think you're right. Other questions or comments, further discussion?
Mr. President, if you don't mind me just interjecting rather quickly, is that before I published my letter with the recommendations, I did check in with trusted coaches who would give it to me straight and tell me whether or not where my head was at was, was correct. And I do feel like I have the support of our coaching team on, on this, this overview of what would be an appropriate protocol to instill. And I do envision that there'll be others that we have not even thought of yet, because we won't be hosting these events, we'll be traveling to these events, save probably gymnastics, where I hopeful that we might be able to do some online events as they're a low-risk sport.
Great.
So, oh, go ahead. Uh, this is Jessica. And you know, to Leah's point, I'm not sure if this is the appropriate place to talk to about this or not. I mentioned this, this to Dr. Solerno before. Mike, I'm, I think it's fine for the students to be able to travel, but I think we need to have the right safety protocols in place. And honestly, I'm not concerned about our students. I think that they have been, you know, operating within safety protocols and are used to doing that. But what guarantees do we have in terms of spectators? You know, like one district allows, one district doesn't. You know, we can't really, we can't force any district to do it. And we can't really even force our parents to, but I think it would be nice to, if we said, we would request that parents, you know, as hard as it would be, don't attend these events, you know, that there are no spectator things so that we try to, you know, limit the, the risks as much as possible. So my concern is just that there's appropriate safety protocols. And I don't know at what point those will be spelled out. I mean, I've read what you shared with us, but I think that there needs to be a little bit more.
Thank you so much, Jessica. I appreciate that. Every building's AD has developed protocols for their respective school districts and the information would be spelled out to families even before our kids embark on their travel. And we'll have that on our school district's webpage, the activities page. I have great faith in, and I know you do too, in our coaches and our activities directors to set the conditions for our kids and for our fellow colleagues to be safe in this regard. And as we get that information by venue, we will be sure to pass that along. What you see in my letter, links to my letter are really what we have at this point. And there is more information to come.
So Rod, my question is, are we right now just looking at the, the motion that you offered and not the criteria? Are we discussing the criteria as well?
No, we're looking at the, solely at the motion. We have a, a motion that's been moved and seconded.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Great, hearing none. I have moved and Dani has seconded the motion that is displayed on the scene, on the screen. I'm happy to recite it, but I think we can all see it unless you'd like for me to recite it. And with no further discussion, I think we'll move to a, a roll call, particularly given the connection that we have tonight. So Dani?
Yes.
Dani's a yes. Diana?
Yes.
Diana's a yes. Jeff?
Yes.
Jeff is a yes. Jessica?
Yes.
Jessica's a yes. Kimberly?
Yes.
Kimberly's a yes. Leah?
No.
Leah's a no. Rod, Rod is a yes. The yeses are six, the nos are one, the motion carries. And the district now will follow all recommendations of public health, Madison and Dane County in all capacities with the exception of out-of-county travel for COOP and extracurricular competitions. Moving on to 7B, consideration of calendars, remainder of 2021, 2021 and 22 and 2022.
Sorry, Rod, kind of order. Are we going to discuss the criteria or are we not going to discuss the criteria? Final order. Are we going to discuss the criteria or are we not going to discuss the criteria?
The, I, can you tell me what you mean by criteria?
Well, in addition to the amendment, there was a new page that was proposed. Is that now off the table or what's?
Okay. So there were, yes, there was, there was something, there was something that was inadvertently put in, in, in board docs. This was the most up to date version of, what we acted on was the most up to date version. What, what, and there was a list of, um, what Dr. Salerno called interven- interventions which are going to be handled administratively.
Okay, fair enough.
So there was, so I had, I, what I had done over the, over the course of the, of the, of the holiday, I had worked on a, on a motion. And we had, we had better advice in terms of what the motion should say. So this is actually the second iteration of the motion that I worked on.
Okay. So you're not proposing the new page be added to the gradual reopening plan? Sorry, I looked at it this afternoon. So.
Oh, no, no, no. No, I understand what you're saying. No, that, no Diana, this, this is it. This is, this is it. This is all the trouble I'm making tonight.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Yeah, you got it.
Oh, I would like to make one.
For the confusion.
Just one point, um, when the administration is, is looking over what they're doing there, um, non-school competition for, um, for sports, there are some schools that are requiring quarantine after non-school, so not school related, um, events. So that's just something for the administration to consider.
Thank you. Um, let's, we're on, uh, item seven B, just to re-center us. And this is consideration of calendars for the remainder of 2021, 21, 22, and 22, 23. Dr. Salerno.
Good evening again, board members. You'll see here, um, one of, uh, four calendars we're asking you to approve tonight. Uh, the first one is to reflect the changes, uh, for our kindergarten through fifth grade, um, students and staff, uh, that signify the continuation of the hybrid and virtual model at K two, and then the introduction of hybrid at, um, grades three through five. I'm wondering if it would be okay with you, Mr. President, if we were to take each one of these one by one. Um, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that people might have about this, uh, model that you see on the screen.
Yep.
Motion to approve the K five, K five hybrid virtual calendar.
This is Jessica's second.
Diana has moved. Jessica has seconded a motion to approve the, uh, 20, the calendar for the balance of 2021. Is there any discussion?
I have a quick question. Um, so with all the other grades, there's been like a two-day break before they've come back, but there's not one with this. Where am I missing it?
You're not missing it. It was just hard to denote that in the calendar because we're trying to cover multiple grades that are doing different things at one time.
Got it.
Thank you for recognizing that Leah. And in fact, what we'll do is we will, um, continue to communicate to families those dates in our, in our messaging to them.
Got it. Thank you.
Thanks Leah. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those who, uh, excuse me, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion to approve the, the, the calendar for the balance of 2021 for K through five will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed will say no. Uh, the ayes have it, the motion carries and the calendar is approved. Dr. Salerno.
Thank you. And this next calendar then reflects, uh, the brief discussion we had earlier, uh, tonight, uh, regarding our middle and high school programming. Uh, again, um, reflecting the February 15th and February 22nd target dates for launching our hybrid, uh, program.
May I ask you a question?
Motion to approve the, sorry.
Uh, may I ask you a question? Um, I was just kind of trying to quickly skim what was on here. Um, the future freshman night is still on here for January. I mean, is that going to be turned into a virtual event or will it be postponed? So it could be in person later in the year or how's, I'm sure there'll be more information, but.
Yes, we, we actually, uh, struggled with that question in our own minds. How much do we go back and change what was previously there? Because we know that's important for families too. Um, to your question, Jessica, yes, I do believe the, um, high school administrative team is trying to, um, get something off the ground for future freshman night. Typically we do do it in January, but because they and I are in the middle of trying to plan for, uh, the February 22nd start, uh, we, we just couldn't chew on both of them at the same time.
Great. I, I think I heard a motion from Diana.
Yes. So motion to approve, and I can't read it now, but the 2020, 2021, 4K and 612, I think is what it was, virtual plus calendar.
You got it.
Jessica's second.
Jessica has seconded. Diana has moved and Jess, Jessica has seconded the approval of this calendar. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor will say aye.
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 Those opposed will say no. The ayes have it, the motion carried, motion carries and the 2021, uh, calendar for the remainder of this school year for 4K and, uh, grade six to 12 is, uh, virtual plus is, uh, approved. That's a mouthful. Next calendar, please. Oh, interesting.
Yes. Now, uh, now we're casting forward into the next two years. We know that about this time, parents start to get a little interested in hearing what is our plans for winter holiday breaks and spring breaks and the like. This first one would be a proposed calendar for the 2021, 22 school year. Uh, this was a, uh, calendar that was drafted in partnership with a committee that was representative of, uh, uh, staff as well as a parent, as well as, um, one of our board members. And so, um, we'd ask for the board's consideration of the 21, 22 calendar as presented, please.
Kiss. We, we have a little disconnect. We're looking at 22, 23 right now. I don't know if that, that, uh, we probably want to give people a look at the other one.
Sorry about that.
It's all right.
Too many tabs open on the screen.
All right. Very good. This is 2021.
Motion, motion to approve the 2021, 2022 calendar.
Second.
All right. Well, you guys are quite the pair tonight. Uh, Diana has moved and Jeff has seconded a motion to approve the full year 2021, 2022 calendar. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All the opposed, all those opposed will say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries and the full year 2021, 2022 calendar is approved. 22, 23.
Uh, before we go there, if you don't mind, this just in, uh, uh, on a text I received. Um, the future freshman night is still occurring on January the 11th. Uh, so, uh, God bless them. They're, they're continuing to rock it, aren't they? Uh, more details, no doubt, will be, uh, sent out in the days ahead. So thank you for asking the question, Jessica. Uh, and I'm grateful that, uh, they're continuing to work their magic. They're pretty amazing, aren't they? Um, the next, the next calendar, um, that we're asking for the board's consideration, um, it actually, we, we promoted two versions of the calendar. And, uh, the real difference between the two calendars that you'll see in board docs is, um, where spring break falls. Um, in one version, spring break would fall the last week of March. And in another version, spring break would fall during the first week of April. The committee at the time had initiated, um, the idea of having, um, spring break fall during the first week of April, such that it could coincide, uh, with, uh, Easter Sunday and the traditional Friday prior to that being a day off. But a, a thoughtful comment was made by one committee member, uh, after the conversation to say, hey, wait a minute, you know, if we were to have, uh, spring break during the first week of April, that makes it difficult for us to have, um, people attend, uh, the, or excuse me, the general elections that occur, uh, that include Board of Education, um, uh, voting. So, uh, we've, we've presented two different calendars for you. Uh, and I think at the end of the day, the only difference is indeed just that March, last week of March, spring break versus, uh, during, uh, as opposed to the, uh, first week of April. If we did, um, push back spring break, uh, excuse me, if we did have spring break during that last week of March, we just pushed back the end of the school year by one day, as you can see here on the screen, a really negligible, uh, change, uh, here, but, uh, one that we wanted to just share with you. Anyone, uh, would, who is on that committee wanted to share any additional insights?
So I'm, this is Diane. I'm on that committee and this is actually one of the things that I feel pretty strongly about because I think that having people gone that first week of April, April, the potential for people to be gone that first week of April, and we're looking at 2023. So fingers crossed everything is okay and people are, are well, and we've moved past the, the challenges that we've had over the last few elections. Um, but I think that having those people gone has the potential to suppress the vote of some of our major stakeholders. And so that's why the, the second calendar with the March spring break.
Are you making a motion, Diana, or are we just making?
I'll make a motion to go with, uh, spring break being the last week of March of 2023.
Jeff has made a motion.
This is Jessica's second. Or Diana can.
Just sec- seconded the motion. Further discussion? Hearing then all those in favor will say aye.
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 Those opposed will say no. The ayes have it, uh, the motion carries and the full year 22, 23 calendar with spring break, the last week of March is approved. Any other calendars for us, Dr. Salerno?
No, bless your hearts. I think five is enough.
No? Twenty, can't go up to 34, 25 just for, for fun? When will spring break be then? All right, anyway, let's, uh, move on then to, um, eight, eight, just a comments, number is 608-2509166. I can't believe I still have to look at the eight. 608-509166.
There's no one yet.
Okay. We'll wait. We want to give people a chance. That's just going to be great to be back together at the old step room for these meetings.
All right. We have. I'm sorry, Rod, uh, one person just chimed in, Todd Nessine.
Awesome.
Hello there. I just realized I was out of the meeting, so I'm up on my phone. You, you hear me all right?
You sound great.
Yes, yes we can.
Great. I was just actually typing up an email to thank you and the school board for the vote tonight. Uh, but I guess I'll just do it verbally. So, thank you and, uh, very much appreciated.
Thanks for all you do and, and we look forward to hearing all about your, your competitions. That's for sure.
One more from Martha Kohler Faust.
Hello, I just want to echo, uh, Coach Nessine. Most, most appreciative and thankful for, for all you do and thank you for the vote today. We are super excited. My team's been texting parents and I just, I can't wait to get going. So thank you so much.
Well, thank you, Coach. We, we appreciate your leadership and the impact you've had on youth and in our community, which of course you continue to have, and we're looking forward to a great second half of the season.
Thank you so much.
Steve. Of course, thank you. The else going once?
No.
Once. That's all for some comments. Item nine, future agenda items. Of course, if you have a future agenda item, you can follow their, Dr. Salerno or me. Uh, item 10, schedule of next meetings. Anything of, of particular interest, Dr. Salerno?
No, I think it's pretty straight set forward now.
Awesome. That's great. Um, item 11, close session per section 19.85 paragraph one, paragraph eight, negotiating producing of property, investing, investing in public funds or conducting other specific business. Whenever, if for bargaining reasons require close session. Item B, a closed session per section 19.85 paragraph one, sub-paragraph C, considering employment, promotion, compensation or performance evaluation of any public, uh, employee over the government has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. Uh, the, some of the, uh, Danny has moved.
And was there a second? Jeff, did you second that?
Yeah.
Okay, Jeff, the seconded the motion. Oh, we gotta do a roll call, don't we? Uh, Danny.
Yes.
Danny's a yes. Diana.
Yes.
Uh, Diana's a yes. Jeff.
Yes.
Jeff's a yes. Jessica.
Yes.
Jessica's a yes. Kimberly.
Yes.
Kimberly's a yes. Leah.
Yes.
Leah's a yes and I'm a yes. The yeses are seven, the nos are zero. The motion, uh, carries and we will move to close session in five minutes. There is a new meeting number in the email that Dr. Salerno sent to us on December 30th, in case you, you didn't find it. So we'll see you in five minutes. Thank you.